Okay, it's nine o'clock here on February the 13th. We'll call this meeting to order. Notice is hereby given that the regular meeting of the Commissioners Court of Titus County will be held on 13th day of February 2023 at 9:00 a.m. in the Titus County Courthouse, courtroom number 100 on West First Street, room 205, Mount Pleasant, Texas, at which time the following subjects will be discussed. Today, I'm gladly honored to one of my, I guess I should say heroes, is going to give the indication, Dr. Tony Rundles. I watched him play football and be a leader on the football field for Mount Pleasant for many years, and now a leader in our community and serving God, and he's going to give us our indication that we can all rise.
Judge Strahan, I'd like to thank you for this day. Thank you for how you blessed us and covered us. But before we begin today, we want to pause to give you thanks. You're the source of life and love and hope and peace, and we thank you for a fresh start, and we thank you for this court. We ask you strengthen them, God. We ask you give them courage to make right decisions as they lead our county and this community. And we pray this only to precious Son of Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Rundles. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Public comments and requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551.042 in the Texas Open Meetings Act. Have anyone that'd like to speak today?
Steve Austin.
Steve Austin, if you'd like to come.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. Since we have a couple of new faces since the last time I was in here, welcome aboard and good luck in your endeavors.
Thank you.
The first issue I'd like to bring before the Commissioners Court is to renew an understanding that the historical commission had with precinct two. The Sergeant First Class, Billy Summell, Memorial Park, located from the central western part of Kent, across the road from West New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. We had a bridge that the missionaries preached that when they made the tour, they cleaned up the ditches and did the mowing along the side of the roads to inspect that little park, do any cleanup that may be necessary. Did any assistance contact myself or one of the local veterans group to assist with cleaning things up or anything like that? But to do a little bit of mowing, just keep that little park straight and maintain it. Give you a brief recap. Sergeant First Class, Billy Summell, the coroner in the war, veteran, was killed in action, received a Silver Star. His platoon commander was cut down by an Indian machine gun fire. He went to his aid, was also killed by heavy fire, awarded his platoon commander. He was possibly awarded the Silver Star and Purple Heart, and that Memorial Park is a symbol to his service and sacrifice. They'll also find his name out on the Titus County War Memorial out here on the west side of the building, along with 99 other Titus County residents who gave their open sacrifice in defending our country. This gives way to the second item that I'd like to bring before the Commissioners Court. On a previous occasion, there was an activity in the courthouse grounds by an entity outside of the Titus County government, but a local, a local entity. In my estimation, an issue of great disrespect and embarrassment took place. I saw it, raised a complaint, and I was told that that happened. Look, it'll be okay, we don't need to do anything, nothing happened again, but it happened again. Similar circumstance, had an outside entity have an event on courthouse grounds, and I believe it was the belated Simple Demise event, and a number of poor bodies, Johnny Old Spice were placed on a memorial here in the courthouse grounds. Same event, the same situation would happen in the prior case, but on a different way. It was unfortunate that also here in that town was a tribute to the thirteen military people we lost at 88 in leading Afghanistan was also at that location. Now here today to ask the Commissioners and the judges to see to it that that doesn't happen again. I believe everybody's precinct kind of handles up one quarter right here at the courthouse, they're ready heads out in that corner. I don't think anybody has given direct authority over this particular portion of the county as far as having sole responsibility, so I want to ask each of you to assist me in maintaining and respecting our veterans of Titus County. There are plenty of places around toward our square for Johnny Old Spice to be located. There's a big wide sidewalk across the street, there's a good place for it. The city spent a lot of money, endeavors, research to find a place to put a community, a public restroom. Went a little more around here, they found a place away from courthouse square to put a public restroom. So I'm only asking that we could pay you due respect and honor to their veterans that we would, that your family. These monuments may be the only symbol that something is out for the service of their military personnel. So I'm asking, you know, if I need to come back and build the wall, that we try to maintain at least 20 to 25-foot plates around their monument for courthouse grounds to put any of this equipment, Johnny Old Spice, sanitation stations, that leave our veterans and our servicemembers our due respect. If we need to come back and make that more affordable, we're prepared to do that also. So I'm asking you to show that you care. I care and you care. Make sure that you understand what we're concerned. Titus County has a number of tributes throughout the county. Sergeant First Class, Summell's Park is one, have a number of highways being named, we're going to have another highway named for the group of veterans. There's also a sign of Miller, the Thank You mural, has all the individuals with the exception of the special, which will have to go deep. A salute from the citizens of Titus County, well, Titus County does care, and I'm here to ask you assistance in that area. Thank you.
Steve, we appreciate you coming today. As, as you know, it's not an agenda item that we can't take action on that today, and I think we all support our veterans quite rare around here, and have no problem with that, but we will need to get you on the agenda before we can do something with that. But appreciate your time today, and we appreciate your service for our country as well. Any other public comments? Anybody wanting to speak? Okay. Considering possibly approve the minutes from the January 23rd, 2023 special meeting of Commissioners Court?
Make a motion, approve them.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parchman.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Considering possibly approve the minutes from the February 7th, 2023 special meeting of the Commissioners Court?
Make your motion.
Commissioner Applewhite makes a motion to approve those?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor? Considering possibly approve additional funding requested by Northex for purchase of a new brush truck that went over projected allotted budgetment, Justin Hargrove.
Roy is here. Roy, come on, you can come on up. Roy's here and Justin plays Justin, had a ballgame at it, the college that he had to be at, and Brad was sick, he was going to come, he's sick, so Roy, Roy's here this morning.
So we get you.
Just a report on our truck that we can't involve, of course, this was, county allocated people that filed for the truck, and after building, looking to build it in service, the cheapest thing we could come up with was $57,395, which gives us an overage of $2,300.95. And seems that the Commissioners Court of Titus County has covered these overages in the way it's likely to be managed.
Is this the original price of the truck, $57? Is that the price the truck was, $57?
Well, the, now, the truck was $57,395, and out of that, $368.95, went to there and running for interest, but our total cost, overage from the $55,000, is $2,300.95.
Did y'all sell another truck in that?
We did not sell another truck. We rotated the truck out of service and requested it. We could sell it, but y'all said no to that. It's got to come back to the county.
Come back to the county.
That truck is a 1998, we have $350,000, very good check, it's coming back. We gave the county another truck last year also, so that's two trucks we rotated back to the county, and would just like to ask for this, this overage.
We covered the, Crouppell's overage last year on their truck, so that was the reason that Northex was requesting this.
Can you fill me in on that, Jim? Now, before, has it not been that Commissioners have given loan, or it just covered those? What is the difference on those?
This one, that last year, they couldn't find a truck that was, was, you know, the same price, and we agreed to, to come back and, and pay them for what they was over.
The Crouppell truck you're talking about?
The allotted price that we had allotted.
But this is not the, this is nothing to do with the bed or anything, that's just the price of the truck, right?
The truck came with, and $57,300.
We, we usually.
Looking around, having to figure that out.
Because we, we have paid more because we don't know how much these trucks are, and we have in the future, in the past, we have paid because we don't know what the prices are, we just allow so much.
Right. It's hard, it's hard to guess when you're doing this, how much the trucks don't cost.
Or if you can get a truck.
If you can get one.
Or if you can get one.
You can get one, yeah.
Yeah, well, I talk to Marcus, where we, because of our department, he told me, he laid last year, overage was a couple thousand, which is, that's where we ran off.
We want to continue to do what's fair with the, oh, not just one versus the other, but entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Applewhite makes a motion that we do pay the $23,95.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'll give the actual, this is just my, I would.
Just get that to Barbara, and Barbara will be able to invoice you that on. Considering possibly approve moving the payroll function, including current payroll check, clerk sharing rentals and payroll budget from the auditor's office over to the treasurer's office. Barbara and Dana are going to speak on that. This is something that we used to do in the past, and we've kind of talked to them, so we'll let both the ladies speak on that if you'd like. Dana, you want to go first, or you want Barbara?
I probably as a part of the director of office in all the other counties. It was taken away many years ago, and Barbara and I discussed this, and when I ran for this office, I wanted to preserve the office of treasures, and that's one of the functions that really should be there. And this is what I've done for a while, and I know payroll, and I'm excited if you guys will allow, to let it get back to the director of office.
Barbara, you have a comment?
Yes, sir. As Dana said, before when she was deciding to run for treasurer, she contacted me about the possibility of moving this. I suggested that we not make that part of the election process.
Right.
But now that she's been elected, we discussed this numerous times. I will tell you, by state statute, the treasurer's offices were normally payroll as done, as is done. In Titus County, it's been years and years, sometime in the 90s. And the problem that I've seen is I go to training as I'm required to go to, but at my training, they don't talk about payroll because.
That's the treasurer's.
The bill for that is in the treasurer's office. Now, I managed payroll for school for 27 years, so we've done a very good job, I think, in the auditor's office. Lady Walker just came and made the presentation, he's very pleased, he had no recommendations. Sharon Reynolds does a good job, but I think it's important that we put that where it needs to go, but that's acting Commissioners' responsibility, your choice. So Dana and I are on the same page with this. I'm confident in her abilities, I've talked to Lady Walker about her abilities, and I'm going to trust you to that.
Got a check.
Also want you to know that I'm busy with the district judges about this, because they are my boss. Their recommendation is because of, you know, Dana Applewhite Commissioner and Dana Applewhite Treasurer, that we will need in my auditor's office to look closely at precinct three payroll and the two of your payroll, but that's common practice in, or in relationship.
We'd want to do that anyway, yes.
Yes, sir. So if it pleases the court, it pleases Treasurer Applewhite, and it pleases me.
I'd like to make a motion to, to transfer the payroll over to the Treasury.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to move it.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Parchman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Considering possibly approve the funds to the Railroad Commission for organization report filing, Guaranty Bank and Trust for the letter of credit and processing fees and legal fees. Barbara, can you speak a little on that?
Dana.
Dana, I'm sorry.
On the railroad commissioner.
Senator.
Yes, Guaranty contacted me and said this is something that we've done every year with Ruidam, and so that we need a check for the railroad commission for $750,000, we need a check for guaranteed for $150,000.
$125,000.
$125,000, and that's to cover the fees for them, and then they require a lawyer to look over this, and a lawyer should be responsible for all of this. This is something that's been done every year, so I'm just asking that you guys will approve that so that we can get that paid for that filing for the railroad.
Judge Cooper, I also believe that we need to, within the, the, with the motion, that we need to change from Bradley and Cheryl Cready to you as the county judge and Dana as the treasurer, that's something else Guaranty might just ask us about.
Motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Parker makes a motion that we approve that. Need to second.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Number seven, considering possibly approve the budget amendments, less than $50,000 would not require to be presented or approved before the court. People are going to look at this and say, oh, they're just trying to figure out how they can get hold of the money. When, when a Commissioner's out there working and needing a, needing a chainsaw, needing this, needing that, I know $50,000 covers a lot of different things, but there's also some material on things like that under $50,000 is the reason that this is on air. Any of you Commissioners like to speak on it as well. Each Commissioner is responsible for their budget, so it's kind of their money, it's their money anyway, just solve some of the paperwork.
Well, what has it been in the past? Has it been $50,000 and they've just cut this off?
It had been before, but, but not since Barbara and them have been here, is my understanding, before.
My understanding is that state statutes, $50,000.
The state statute.
$50,000. In the past, I don't know that we've had a limit, we've not had any limit for what kinds of work. Judge, we bring some smaller things. I, I think that this item is here likely related to used equipment that costs less than $50,000, because those are the things that are used and are sitting on the line, and you need it, you don't get it, someone else will get it.
Right, yeah, to get it, right.
These, these are, my understanding, are budgeted items. This is not just a free willing check to just run. These are budgeted items that, that they could spend up to the $50,000 without having to bring it to the court. I think that's the important part here, that it is already a budgeted item, it's not something that they just drove by down the road and found something that they liked.
And you still, I think, in the purchase order and writing the specification, just the standard procedure, you just won't have to wait, you know, that's two weeks.
Two weeks for it to come before the court, and, and a lot, a lot of this will help on the used equipment when they do find something. If we find it at one of the meetings, or one of the local reps finds us something that, that's used and is a good price, it don't normally stay there very long, and so the two weeks before we can meet in Commissioners Court is, is kind of a drawback to being able to purchase some, some better things and dragging our feet, waiting on it to get to court.
Well, I make the motion to pass this.
Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion to approve that.
Second.
And seconded by Parker. All those in favor? Considering possibly approve the Titus County plan for the use of ARP funds by doing the following. Number one, using sole source purchasing to pay the fire protection for a two-year contract with the city of Mount Pleasant, and number two, using the sheriff's department payroll and benefit expenditures period ending 9/3/022 and prior.
Make a motion, we approve this as well.
Got a motion by Parchman, Commissioner Parchman.
Seconded it.
And seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Considering possibly approve the funds for purchasing the motor grader with 14 motor, Dana Applewhite.
This is a machine, a maintainer, we've been trying to get, get here since, I guess, July, and we finally got to okay with it, and it'd be something that will be well utilized.
I make the motion to approve the purchase of a motor grader.
Motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Parker. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Number 10, considering possibly request for funds for four generators for Tri-Special Utility District by Aaron Gann. Aaron, you'd like to speak on that?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a little quick history about us, a short, quick. The Tri-Special City District was, got the first meters in 1968, we had 207 meter connections. Last meter counted was last month, just a toll meter connection, we have 5,746, with 5,020 of them in Titus County. If I use the PTQ population per meter, that'd be 17,570 residents in Titus County next week in 2022.
How many is that again, Aaron? I'm sorry.
17,570 using the PTQ 3.5 per meter. We've asked the county with some of the funds that they may be getting, the possibility of helping us purchase some generators to go to some of the stations, and we do not have a generator left. Unfortunately, they have a generator, they sit there forever, we need, and so we need and we need, and there's a lot of cost, so it's kind of hard for the water system to go put $200,000 generators in the system, and we could be using that to, that's right, water lines, help with pressure volume, build pump station to help with the pressure of the pot. That's one reason we do not have pump station, our generators have a pump station. We have a nice one, we see our most needed workers. We're building a new station here in 1730, out of Rose, or Texas, that has purchased our old station, we did go and hit that on the request, we just go ahead and we did this station and hit the generator in that station. Like I said, that generator is going to be about $180,000, that's what we did with our station.
Aaron, how many, how many counties do y'all serve other than Titus?
We serve all of Titus, about 40% of Titus, about 40% of Lawrence, and about 5% of Grant. Lawrence County is just real good about getting grants for us, we just finished up current last year, where they go $200,000 relation water lines in Lawrence County. I think since last 20 years, they've got three grants for us, come close to a million dollars. I don't know if y'all are aware, but there is a process that Commissioners can sponsor grants for rural water systems, and Lawrence County uses Grant Works out of Austin, buying those grants and sponsoring, and they really did a good job. They say they cost a little more, covering 40%, but most times, this last one cost us about 35% of the money, didn't go far enough to go where we needed to go, so we had extra money to get where we needed to be, and we had to take for section. There are grants that's been out there that the county.
Are the, are those other counties, are they chipping in on these generators as well?
Grant County, no, we don't have anything over there for our post stations. Lawrence County, like I said, they've been helping us with the grants, they have not. Grant County has sponsored grants, or sponsored generators for type springs, special utility district, that's their major supplier of Grant County here.
And there is a possibility, you say, that we could, would work with y'all as far as getting some grants for that as well, or is there?
Well, y'all have sponsored grants, county, like I say, Grant Works out of Austin, Texas, to do Lawrence County use, they're in contact, Lawrence County judge, in particular, from the human, how they go about it. They have four roads also, I mean, they can get the road grant also, that might help. I would have provided water for our customers, we provide portable fire hydrants out there for the rural fire partners to use to help protect the system out there also, and they don't. Again, on what time we really need fire protection to do a disaster, you don't have the pressure up there, it doesn't really benefit them from the fire hydrants and the others. So, I know I asked for more generators, didn't expect more, but you know, you got, you got to ask for some.
Commissioners, got any questions for Mr. Gann?
I think as being a utility, you know, I mean, we've got so many places in the county that needs this rescue money that we've got, that, that we ought to try for a grant for you instead of giving you $500,000 for generators. Try to get it that way instead of this way.
Yeah, that'd be, you know, y'all still, I said we could, you know, anything that points in the regular, you know, I've got, you know, I've got lines out, you know, if we need water, where, like I said, there are certain areas that without generation, we're not going to be able to keep 20 PSI water, or water, you know, for what time we need, for what time we need them, snowmower, mast snowmowers, you know, stuff like that.
Don't need them till you need them, just like a spare tire.
Yeah.
I think that's it.
Well, I make a motion, we table this issue and further discussion.
I second that.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parchman to table, seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor? Got a motion by Commissioner parchment to table. Seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor? Table that. Considering possibility of approving dismissing the penalty and interest charge for late payment of taxes for Prefort Manufacturing. John Cathy. Can you pull that mic a little closer to you again, what he, I'm sorry?
We can't hear as if we want to.
Easy back there.
Is that better?
That's better.
So we got checks every Thursday, January 26th was the Thursday we got the checks for the applicable taxing fees. Putting them to a lock, cabinet over, grow the weekend. Monday, 20th, January 30th, I'll retrieve the checks, set checks. Unfortunately, we should all the checks out of cabinets. We paid those on January 30th for all the other taxing fees we received for PMCI apartments too, which was a real stakeholder company. On the 26th, we were checking our bank statements and we realized the checks were for PMCI, so we're going to have to clear. Quick investigation found Meyer not retrieving the checks from set cabinet, immediately moved down to taxing jurisdiction, paid the tax, paid the taxes and interest. That was out of cool. So it's an error. That's a longstanding issue with the county. The, you know, city of Mount Pleasant, their business. They were trying to make dollars from investment going up at 12, breaking the tax base. So I'm here to ask for a way for, totally my fault for Meyer, completely innocent, you know, being the new guy, dropping the ball.
All these properties here, this is the building itself, or is this houses or?
It's land building as well.
Land building, so houses, residential as well.
Well, I feel that Prefort bring a lot to the table for Titus County and they're a major employer for Titus County. I feel that we should waive this. I'll make a motion, we waive this for them.
That was over just a two-day period, right? From a couple of days? How much?
Six days.
Melissa, would you like to speak on this before we have a motion or anything?
They are good saving with the county. They pay every year on time. I will give them that. I just, for the record, just to be known, it's, it's, in my opinion, it's probably about $4,652.62. There's approximately what will they give you back to them just for Titus County alone? So people have to go to each entity and ask for each, for them to give us back on each entity. We don't want to give Titus County back. We choose to do that.
Right. And there is some abatement still there with your taxes there as well? Okay. How many late taxes do you have? Do you have that figure? Just other than the briefer, is there a lot of different ones that didn't pay on time?
For countywide?
Countywide?
Um, yes. So there's been a problem that had to pay the taxes yet.
So if we waive this, then there's going to be others knocking at your door and maybe knocking at our door, is what you're saying?
I can see this increasing as it gives out that this is a possibility. Because we all have that crisis of the county's county to ask for that TNA back.
Thank you, Melissa. Any questions, Commissioners, for Melissa?
Is it for business only or homesteads?
No, it's all their properties.
It's plant, it's, it's, is it buildings?
And houses as well.
It's like their real estate holding group.
They've got a holding group for all their properties. Is that correct? I may be speaking wrong. Okay. Have you been to the other tax entities, the hospital, the city and the college and?
But your intentions were that you was going, you had them all, going to pay them and then just all you got, didn't know.
In my opinion, we make laws to follow laws. You know, if that's our law, that's what we should do. That's my opinion.
Any other comments? Thank you. Either need a motion or we can table it.
He's going to make a motion.
We've got to have a second. Got a motion to waive it by parchment, but don't have a second.
You know, there is laws and everything, but consideration that they were, money was there and everything. It's just a mishap that something unfortunate happened this way. And you know, a lot of people, you know, can't afford to pay their taxes. And it's not their fault. They're trying. You gotta give them that. And this is just a mishap that was, you know, thought was taken care of and just didn't get taken care of. I'm going to second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner parchment. Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor? Those opposed? All those in favor? No vote, abstaining. Considering possibly approve the proposed plating and development of Arquin Estates, lots one through five for residential subdivision located in precinct one at the intersection of County Road 1670 and County Road 1660. Judge Blaine?
We've got a miracle subdivision, it's a precinct endeavor. 7.72 acre total tract, only added, it's, uh, six lots. About a lot, we have 1670, we want to have 1660. Not going to be a need for interior roads. We can stroke and, uh, based off their individual lot size. There will not be further development of the individual lots.
And I've looked at it as well. I think it's going to be a good subdivision. So I make a motion, we approve it.
Motion made by Commissioner parchment to approve the plat.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner Parker. All those in favor? Those opposed? Carries. 13. Considering possibly approve the proposed plating and development of Green Hill Meadow Estates in addition to the ETJ of the city of Mount Pleasant, Titus County. Lots one through six located on Farm to Market Road 2152 and County Road 1400. Mr. Blaine?
Okay. Judge Barry is the developer on this project. The total tract size, I believe, is like 35, just over 35 acres. Anyway, there will be, again, about this property in six lots, five, six acres each. It is inside the ETJ. We've kind of gone back and forth about the city's requirements and our requirements. In my opinion, the city's not going to have city water. So you see we're going out there and it's been our requirements.
Right.
So what he's done, he's got these six tracks, roughly 5.6, some of them a little larger, 5.6 acres each. They're going to be initially served by onsite sewage if it's in, city sewer's out there and they decide to do something different. He doesn't have.
Will he have to move to the city sewer at that time or will he, can he stay either way?
He can stay either way.
Okay.
The only benefit probably, well, the two benefits that would occur later if city sewer was run out there was one, he's not able to maintain or the property owners aren't able to maintain an individual onsite sewage facility. But also it would allow him, if, and I understand that there will be deep restrictions filed on this because he didn't have it quite prepared yet, that's going to restrict the further development of these individual lots. Now, if that is ever waived, these lots are big enough for.
Could divide into five different lots.
Yeah, they could be, that is set about smaller, which require the building of interior roads. But again, I don't think that's going to be something that we're going to have to see or deal with.
Because it is.
Something that might occur after they've taken the statements.
Okay. But as far as you know, if they do go dividing that up, they'd have to come back and get permission to divide that into five different spaces from the Commissioner's.
We're doing a replat.
A replat.
I make a motion to approve this proposal, plan this development.
Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion to approve this development.
Second.
Seconded by parchment. All those in favor? All those opposed? Number 14. Considering possibly approve the proposed planning, development of estates on lots one through three for residential subdivision located in precinct four at Farm to Market Road 2348 and Highway 11. Jimmy, this be in your?
Yes, it will be in mine. Judge, that's the paperwork that's rolled up over the side of you on the.
Okay. Clint, do you?
This, again, is a very simple one. They have added the frontage. Lots going to be accessed off of FM 2348. One of them actually will have frontage on Highway 11. But I feel like it's, how close it is to the intersection, I don't feel like text out or whatever will allow to have a driveway there. This is one of those, if they had intended to keep it all as a family, we probably would be here to back that up. But they, uh, Paul Anderson had offers property, one of them's built his house already. They started building another one. And I'm like, okay, I won't, just, I'll family here, will myself. You settle out sometime, it's going to be a subdivision. And they immediately went to work and get everything done. And they have.
Everything's right in your.
Provided, yeah, they, but they might not start it out because they have to correct, but they call it a pretty nice. And I think this one should be.
No problem. Okay.
I make a motion, we approve it, Judge.
Commissioner Parker makes a motion to approve. Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor? Those opposed? Considering possibly approve the authorizing the request for qualifications for an architect for the annex facet of repairs. This is something that we have used Prefort Manufacturing Architects on before. It's not that we're going to go without them, but they'll be open for bid as well. Is that correct, Barbara? For those in the audience that don't know what that's about, that's across the street over there at the old annex where the black rock and stuff's falling off the walls and whatnot. We've had some plans drawn, but haven't moved forward with that. And something that we're going to need to do in the near future for sure.
I make a motion to consider an architect approval.
Got a motion by Commissioner Mitchell.
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner parchment. All those in favor? Those opposed? Considering possibly approve the extending of the HW Locknar supplemental work authorized on Farm to Market Road 1735 to 123123. Gary, you going to speak on that?
Watch the mic. Good to see you guys again. Gary couldn't be here today, so I came up. So I needed to be here for some other things anyway. The good news is I'm not asking you for any money.
Good.
So what do you need money? All we need is more time. The time ran out on our work authorization and we're still not through. Part of that was delays on Texas par. There's been a lot of things that can't do. But in reality, I believe the next commissioner's meeting, you're going to be asked to authorize payment for the last piece of roadway we purchased. I believe there was some holdup with the bank getting the.
Bank of America, is that correct?
Yeah. Getting the lien release. The utilities are all out there moving right now. Mostly what this time is going to be used for is to process invoices when they start coming in. So I'm here, I'll answer any questions that you have. Basically, all we're asking for is that you're taking in our time.
I make a motion, we approve.
Commissioner Parker makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. Considering possibly approve the quarterly investment report. Mrs. Barbara Sherbert?
This is the standard report that I presented to you quarterly. This will be the last one that I've signed individually. You recall, you put that applied and I both have the, these responsibilities. There's one change here. Gary, banking is required to give securities for 102% of the balances that we have. So the last page there is stated a little differently. We still have sufficient pledges, but it's just, it's just standing more briefly and it specifically spells out the underintuition. Other than that, this is the standard report.
And that report will be coming from the treasurer from now?
It will come from jointly.
Both jointly?
My understanding is she will prepare it and we will audit it and then we'll bring it to you.
Perfect.
It's normally a function that's done in the treasurer's department.
I make motion, we approve the quarterly investment report.
Commissioner Parker makes a motion to approve it.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner parchment. All those in favor? Those opposed? Considering possibly accept the voluntary fire department annual reports as a matter of record. Barbara, have you got all of those, all the reports from them?
Yes, sir, I have received, uh, well, what I'm reporting to you today is the training for this, for all voluntary fire departments and the city of Taco along with, with those items were received. And let me get to the right page, too. You have one page that is of legal status, that's a part of it. Okay. Every department got their monthly report in on time with the exception of two for the entire year. Those two, Cootle was one day late on their April, and they were, uh, five days late on their June, there was holiday there. All of us of them were on time, with the exception of NorTEX, they too got their June report in late, but again, that year was a holiday. So those of all of them received the monthly reports in timely manner. On the training report, um, everyone had the 20 hours that's required. With the exception of Argo. And when I looked at that and, and contacted Sarah Collier, and thank you, Mr. Applewhite, for getting that contact in with quick permission, as it turns out, Argo had turned in only seven hours, but their volunteers had attended training at the city of Mount Pleasant that they did not turn in to us, and they had attended 66 hours of training with the city of Mount Pleasant. So at the end of the day, they had exceeded the requirement, they just didn't send that in monthly as they should have. We are currently awaiting their annual report, they were required to give us an annual report that's due January 31st. That's not anything new, it's just, um, because it's annual, sometimes it's hard to remember. So I've reminded them about that. We received three of those, we're waiting on the rest of them. Last year, it took all the way into, um, May or June to get the last one. But I just want to bring you a report today and let you know for that.
Sounds a lot better than it has been in the past, for sure.
Significantly better than in the past.
We appreciate the volunteer fire department getting that to them on time as well.
And I appreciate the city of Taco because their, their contract does not require them to, to produce these reports for us, but they have gone above and beyond and sent those through.
Great. Get a motion to accept these?
Make a motion, make a motion, we accept them.
Commissioner Parker makes a motion to accept those.
I second it.
Commissioner Mitchell, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve oral and written reports of the county officials.
Make a motion, we approve them.
Commissioner Parchman with a motion to approve those.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
Consider and possible accept the treasurer's report as a matter of record.
Make a motion, we approve it.
Commissioner Parker makes a motion to accept it.
Second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve budget amendments.
Commissioner, we have two budget amendments today. Uh, the first one is number 2023 dash zero eight. It's for $100. Um, it's for the maintenance farm, they requested an increase to vehicle expense and a decrease to other, uh, expenses for the maintenance farm. It's related to shocks for the service truck. Apparently, Titus County has kept that item separate for a number of years, and they want to continue to do that, otherwise we would be bringing a $100 budget amendment to you. That's the first one. The next one is electional shopping, everyone. It's number 2020, 2023 dash zero nine. It's 185,292 dollars, and it's for the purchase of the maintenance and the motor revenue that you did, you approved in number nine. Those funds will be paid for out of the, uh, the former American Rescue Plan funds. Once those funds are exhausted, they lose their identity. That means we won't be calling them that anymore, so we had to give them a name. The recommended name is General Admin because it's under the admin of the county court, and I just labeled it as prior funding, so that we'll all know what that is. I'm putting that in a separate department within the general fund, so it will be easy for y'all to look at and to follow and to see what those items are. I do have a request, uh, at the February meeting, we went over the big list, we didn't take a vote on those items. So my request is that by February 20th, November 20th, the 27th, I think we need to take an actual vote, and then I'll do a budget amendment for everything that's in there. I think it needs to have a vote.
Talking about on the two, the two, uh, the fire department and, and that?
All, everything else except that we discussed, we put a yes beside it.
We'll need to, we'll need to, there won't be a yeses on all of those then?
No, just the one, just we got that, yeses. It's my recommendation. I, I think it's, I do not, I'm not comfortable with a budget amendment for those without y'all having voted on it. We discussed it and went through that whole process.
You'll send us that, we'll put that on the agenda, so. No big problem.
But for today, there's only these two, that one, we're allowed to do that, that one.
Make a motion, we approve the budget amendments.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parchman to amend the budget amendments.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Mitchell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Got to sign the pay orders and approve the payments?
Make a motion, we pay our bills.
Got a motion by Commissioner Parker to pay the bills?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Applewhite. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Closing comments. Jeff, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, not, not all today.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell?
No.
Commissioner Applewhite? Commissioner Parker?
I don't have anything.
We'd like to thank y'all for coming today. Got to take a, uh, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Mitchell to adjourn. All, Commissioner, Commissioner Parchman, second. All those in favor?
Aye.